Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, May 14th, 2018, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, everyone has attended. And our first item is going to be the introduction of a new employee. And Jack?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have the new employee?
Yes, Jesse is here tonight. We had a retirement or resignation back a couple of months ago. Sarah Haberall had the position opened up. We had a few applicants for the position. Jesse had started with us about a month before. We had a lot of, a lot of times in the office where the office wasn't going to be covered. There's people of maternity leave and just different things. So we were short in the office. We hired Jesse on a part-time basis. So she was with us about six to eight weeks prior to this position opening up. And when it opened up, Jesse has all this background that really we were looking for. She's from Coon Rapids originally and moved back recently. So it was a perfect fit and we're excited to have her. So, this is Jesse Harmon and we're excited to have her there. We were working today at the outdoor pool getting that ready. So she's actually going to go down. We're doing an early sign-up for the Aquatic Center. So you know how to mad rush the first day when the pool opens. All the people standing outside trying to sign up. So we're doing a little incentive to get people to sign up early. So she's going to head down there right now with Pam and hopefully get some bad membership sold.
Thanks to meet you. Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Our next item is the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes from the April 23rd and 30th meetings, approval of bills and claims. And we have three renewals, or two renewals and a new Class B permit. First one is a renewal of a Class C liquor license with outdoor service, Hourglass LLC, renewable Class E liquor license with carryout beer, carryout wine, and including native wine in Sunday sales for Hy-Vee. And a new Class B carryout native wine permit runs from June 1st, 2018 to July 11th, 2018 for Casey's General Store, number 3025. Need a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion in the second? Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Are there any oral requests and communications from the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, our next item is a proclamation for older Americans for the, for 2018. Whereas Carroll Iowa includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Carroll Iowa is committed to engaging in supporting older adults, their families and caregivers. And whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities to promote physical, mental and emotional well-being, no matter your age. And whereas Carroll Iowa can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead and mentor. Now therefore, I, Dr. Eric Jensen of Carroll Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2018 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. All right. Our next item is the Historical Preservation Commission update. And Barb?
We like your proclamation for older Americans. Vicky's handing around the latest update on our project, which we will call the City Cemetery Museum. I remember someone asked when we were here last to talk about it, you know, how this project was going to work out. And I gave an answer at that time and I thought about it later, how lucky we were to have a solid, good structure to begin with. But boy, did a lot of details come up. What's new on this one is the bench that Clay donated.
Thank you, Clay. That was nice to hear.
That's beautiful.
Glad we could do it. A lot of work went into it. I was impressed to have a quick tour from Vicky. It's just amazing, all the details and nuances, from lights to even the displays for the pictures and such that you have are just beautiful.
Well, it's going on our original plan. And but Vicky managed to find some fixtures that were identical to the one that was left in there. And they were donated. Then we found out from a person who lived across the fence there that there used to be carriage doors on that building. And we just found out a couple of hours ago that those doors are now constructed. And they're going to be painted tomorrow and will be installed this week. So that's exciting. And we put in the landscaping, leveled the dirt, washed, power washed inside. Now Vicky did most of that, painted. Carolyn was very instrumental in that, painted the window paints. And the glass has been replaced. So we are very much on schedule for having that completed. What's left is installing the carriage doors and then the sidewalk Jack says will be put in before Memorial Bank, soon as they can. But also the lock on the door. We have the door ready to be put in, but we need a lock that can be opened on a timer. So, any questions?
The pictures looked really outstanding. The work from the before and after picture, it's unbelievable.
Another serendipitous event was I managed, someone gave me the Works Progress Administration plaque, 1937, from Beale County Home. And we're not going to install that in the museum, too. So it's amazing the things we find. It's like that cornerstone of the old courthouse. Things are out there. You just have to find them. Okay, and the second, if there's no questions? The second thing is our calendar is here. Vicky's going to hand out some calendars. They're going to be $5 apiece. Cost was $5.25. And it's just easier to let the 25 cents go. You know, people will buy the calendar. These are people, characters. Oh, I like to see that.
That's what I did last year.
Almost hope we show up, you're going to have to spend some money. These are characters, well, every December one is an odds and ends page that Vicky pulled together. There's some really interesting characters and things that happened here in Carroll. It's a two-year calendar and they feature people, men and women from Carroll, people that left tomorrow. Most of these people have passed. Unless you're a member of a family and it's continued in business, you've got to be dead to be in here.
Well, that takes care of me.
No, get your money back.
Well, I bought that book that you guys had brought up last year and with the, with the signs on it, all that stuff, the history of everything. That was interesting to go through. It took me a while.
We only have a few of those left.
Good. That was full of a lot of information about Carroll, Carroll County.
It's a nice book to have because you can open it anywhere and start reading and learn something.
What amazed me about that is how many fires there was in this town years and years ago.
Every town.
They had no way of putting them out.
Yeah, every town had their protection. What was even more amazing was to find a picture of Carroll after that 1879 fire.
Thanks, Barb.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Our next item is ordinances and seeing none. We're going to move on to resolutions. And our first resolution this evening is the fiscal year 2019 health insurance renewal. And Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think that is better.
Yes, we do have Debbie Dean here with Benefit Source and I will let her explain our good news.
Yes. Thank you for coming, Deb.
Thank you for having me. We do have, we do have good news this year. I hesitate to say again because that's probably not a wise idea, but we do have good news. What's being handed out right now is a sheet that will probably look familiar to many of you because it's the same type of format that we've been using for the last handful of years. But as a reminder, we use a strategy known as partial self-funding. And so just to take you back to last year for a minute, last year, we increased the deductible on the plan, the base plan offered by the city. It had been a $3,000 deductible and we increased it to $5,000 because the premium savings was greater than the estimated additional expense. And that has held true throughout the year. So our plan this year will increase, our health insurance premium will increase by 4.98%. That's one component of the plan that we offer. So the base plan that we purchased from Wellmark is a 4.98% increase. That is low relative to what most plans have increased. Even on the low side, 7% to 10% is about trend right now for large cases. So our premium increase is below trend. And that's before claims and demographic changes and group size changes are taken into consideration. So that's a, that's a strong positive. And then the recommendation is that we would remain on that $5,000 deductible plan. We've estimated the partial self-funding exposure, as you can see when you look at the top half of this page, to be approximately $154,000. Now, we use a consistent methodology, year in, year out, to estimate that expense. If this year is similar to prior years, we may very well not spend that much. But we still use consistent methodology in formulating what we think the expense could be if we did not have a good year. As a reminder, we've done this now for, I believe, eight years. And six of those eight years, our overall total spend has been lower than the prior year. So we still, or I should say rather, as we stand today, our expense really is less than it was in the 2010-2011 plan year, which is an unusual story to tell as it relates to health insurance and a really welcome story to tell as it relates to our plan. We continue to offer a second plan in the event that someone needs to purchase a different directory. And that's been the case now for several years. But our partial self-funding story has proven successful because we buy a higher deductible and stand in the gap and pay claims when needed for those members who do exceed what the city offers as their deductible and their out. And that has been far less expensive than trying to buy the employee plan on a fully insured basis.
Did we hear anybody use the COOP at all this year?
We have a couple of retirees.
Retirees, okay.
The amount of dollars that you said that you're spending is less for the last six years, is that?
Six of the eight, six of the last eight years we've had.
Does that include the cost of inflation or just dollar amount?
Total cost is dollar amount, just true cash flow.
That means it's more then?
I don't get to tell this story very often.
Yeah, but our percentage increase has been pretty small the last several years, too.
So the cost of insurance still goes up higher than inflation?
The cost of insurance is going up higher than the CPI, yes.
Correct. And what are you going to attribute that to? From the insurance company's perspective, since you're only allowed to make the same amount of percentage profit, no matter what, correct? What is, what do you, what would you blame it on?
Well, and let me say, too, that this would be more from, from the agency's perspective than the insurance company's perspective because we're independent and we would represent any insurance company that was the best fit for the city of Carroll. But I would tell you that the cost of trend in pharmacy is significant. And I would also tell you that still the cost of services is escalating at a rate far greater than the CPI or the PPI, either one. And so, you know, we look at general inflation in our economy and then we compare it to health insurance inflation. And we still have significant usage. Every day we have new medications that become available that are in the tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they're life-saving. And in many instances, they avert a procedure, but they still add heavily to the cost of claims. And how we, how we reduce that is...
Yeah, I'm a pharmacist. I know a little bit about this more than some would, I guess. But we don't see those drugs because the insurance companies fill them themselves.
Right.
And so we only see the other side and side up. Let me tell you, the side we deal with is going significantly down.
Right.
The prices, okay? So that's why I'm wondering where this increase is coming. If indeed it's from pharmacy, it surprises me.
But specialty meds are heavily utilized. And like you say, they're for...
Correct. In fact, we don't even know people are on them, which is another issue.
Right.
We should be told.
Oh, yes.
But we're not. I mean, I'm surprised sometimes to find out someone's on something I didn't even know. It would be helpful to know.
Right.
And I've let the right people know.
And it looks like the trend, hopefully the trend for medication therapy management through local pharmacy organizations working with members should help.
That's why I'm saying that part's going down. The part we deal with is going down. It, those specialty drugs, it only takes one because they're $30,000, $40,000. You can drive Mercedes-Benz off a cliff every year for a lot of these drugs. It'd be the same price and that's the truth. We don't ever see those, but I know what you're getting at. Very expensive.
Even if we just look at, you know, there's a new migraine, a new biologic migraine that's to be released here very shortly. And it can change lives for people that deal with chronic migraine. But the last I read on that is probably projected at like $35,000. And that's just one example. There are, there are many examples. But, but trend for pharmacy and trend for healthcare procedures is still escalating at a rate greater than inflation. And I wish I did have an answer for you. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion about the health and well-being space and how to help people manage their health and well-being and their chronic conditions. But there's a lot to be, there's so much still to be done with regard to that.
Any other questions for Debbie? Thank you very much for coming, Debbie. Appreciate your time again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
If there are any questions for Laura or anything? If not, I'll need a motion to enter into a contract with Wellmark effective July 1st, 2018, for health insurance benefits with a deductible of $5,000 single, $10,000 family, and out-of-pocket maximum, out-of-pocket maximum $7,150 single to $14,300 family.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion in the second? Base? Yes. Seaman?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Thank you. Our next resolution is the ADA upgrades to the West Side entrance at Carroll Rec Center. And it is 5:34 and we'll open a public hearing. And Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you, I do have the plans for the ADA, recommendations for the West Side of the Rec Center. Currently, you see, most of the time, people need assistance. They're parking on the East Side. It's a little bit flatter than what is on the West Side. So, and it's part of Randy's plan that you've gone over for the last few years, making these ADA improvements. The Rec Center is one that is used vitally a lot, all the time with our residents. So this was kind of an easy one to decide to do at this time. So the plan specifications was from FPH. We've worked with them several times on Rec Center improvements. So the plans are the ADA sidewalk on the West Side coming off the parking lot to the entrance doors. And then on the inside, you have a double-sided doors. The outside ones, the farthest west doors, stay there. The east doors, the inside doors, will be moved further east. So you have a larger gap in between. So when people, if there are people with wheelchairs, they have a little bit more room to maneuver and to get into the building. Although right now, the button that's on the outside, if you push it, it opens that first set and then it's supposed to open the next set. So you have a straight shot in there. That always doesn't happen. But generally, most of the time, that does happen that way so they can have an easy transition into our Rec Center. The form contract is a normal ADA, AIA document that you'll see with a lot of Randy's projects. The opinion of cost, there's $50,000 budgeted. This project is $57,000 for 14, so we'll need to find some additional funds. We have some Rec Center projects that have come under a budget or there's some, there's some room that we, we can make up to 7414 if when we open bids, we need that. So you'll see the true cost. This is just an opinion on probable cost. True cost is when we open those bids and get the little bid. So it'd be my recommendation to approve the resolution, approving the plan specifications for our contract for the West Side entrance. I try to answer any additional questions. There will be a handrail. Right now, that's one of the things Randy and I were just talking about. Handrail on the South Side that will need to be added. That's, can be a place for, you know, people, kids to hang around and that. But we'll try to keep on that. But it's really something we need to have if you want to make this facility ADA compliant and make it a lot easier for people to come in the West Side.
Are they going to make, do you have anybody that struggles with wheelchairs getting in through the current doors now?
Yes.
So we need to get maybe wider doors?
I think more the problem is getting the doors open right, you know, every time. And that's part of the mechanical part of it that we try to get on top of those when we get told something. But no, as far as once they get in the facility, generally, they come in on the West Side, but this will be a better option.
The East Side, the inside doors, we don't have to move those to be compliant? Further?
If you wanted to be compliant on the East Side, that would be one of the recommendations. We didn't address that just because we need one.
You only need one?
One entrance, for sure. And then we're going to do this on the West Side. The East Side, I would, I'd be guessing, I'm guessing we're pretty close to being compliant, other than that east door. And that could be an option if you wanted to do that. I might have some other options once we get this West Side done, things to do on the East Side. And that might be for another meeting, but...
This is just for the West Side, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public for Jack? Seeing none, it is...
No, no.
Mary?
Oh, Mary.
Oh, sorry.
Have you ever considered at the Rec Center, another obstacle, I think, is from the pool area out to the, either to the locker rooms or the area? That, those doors are really hard to...
They're heavy and we've tried to adjust those, make it easier. That's something to look at.
Put it on your, your kids' list because they're, they're very hard to...
Sure. Okay. Yep, I'll make a note.
Sorry, Mary. If there are no other questions from the public, it is 5:40 and we'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the council?
If not, I'll need a motion to adopt the plan specifications, form of contract and opinion of cost for the Senate. Why does that say Cemetery Maintenance Building? Should be Carroll Rec Center.
Does it say?
Says Cemetery.
Says Cemetery Maintenance Building.
Sorry.
Should be Carroll Recreation Center.
So moved.
Okay, there you go.
Second.
There's a motion in the second? Base? Yes. Fletcher?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Thank you. Our third item is the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9. And it is 5:41 and we will open a public hearing. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The plans for the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9 project have been filed by Confluence, the landscape architect on the project. They include streetscape work on about four different sections of street, portion of Clark Street, West Street, Fourth and Fifth in this project. Specifications are the urban standard specification with supplementals and special provisions for streetscape work. Form of contract is, was created by Confluence. The estimated construction cost of the project is at $1,717,12134. And based on that estimate, the current project cost is $1,837,62134. The current bud, well, the current and future budgets contain funding for the project in the total amount of approximately $1.4 million. The project schedule included bid receipt on May 8th. It is the next item on the agenda for consideration for award and completion this year by November 16th. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend a passage of approval of the resolution adopting the plans, specifications for the contract estimate of cost for the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9 project.
Should have awakened to make up the additional, make up the additional?
All of the Streetscape projects, the recent ones, have been funded through the tax increment financing. So I would recommend that this one be funded, the balance be funded. It would involve probably another loan from the, internal loan from the Water Department and then the certification for tax increment collection.
Are there any questions from the public or Randy with regards to the Streetscape Phase 9 project? Seeing none, it is 5:43 and we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council for Randy? If not, I need a motion to adopt the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9 project.
So moved. Second?
There's a motion in the second? Fletcher?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Thank you. The fourth item on the agenda is the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9, the report of the bid opening. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 8th, eight bids were received. They've been tabulated for the Downtown Streetscape Phase 9 project. One bid was received from Batting Construction Company in Carroll. That bid was $1,707,342.05. I've attached a detailed summary of that bid. And it does, it is below the architect's previously adopted bid by about $9,800. And based on that bid, the total now, total project cost is estimated at $1,827,842.05. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend... Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage of the resolution awarding the contract for downtown streetscape to baiting construction at their bid price of 1,707,342.05.
Randy, do you know why those, like, the lights went up so much? Like, the lighting, the lighting unit poles? They were like, estimated at 5,000, and then they came in at 61,000.
6100.
Yeah.
I know. We know that those lighting poles have historically increased in price quite a bit. And it's, it's one of those pieces of equipment that apparently can increase in price.
Right.
And we pay for it. And we're into this thing that, with almost 600 lights so far.
You gotta keep the pattern the same, yeah.
Yeah, and that's unfortunate in the industry.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the contract for the downtown streetscape phase nine project, debating construction company at their bid price of 1,707,342.5. So moved. Second?
There's a motion in a second? Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze, yes? Dirk?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
We have some individuals here, so I'm gonna take Jay next. And so, we're gonna go to the consent of council pursuant to code of ordinance 4110 for Wendell's Weapons LLC. And Brad?
Thank you.
Brad, please.
The city received a request from Mike Wendell of Wendell's Weapons LLC to get a consent in accordance to chapter 41.10 of the city ordinance. This would allow him to discharge firearms within the city limits, and the purpose would be for an indoor firing range that he is deciding on constructing, along with a retail shop in the same location. This would be at the old Carroll Auto Salvage location, which is addressed 810 East Highway 30 here in Carroll. The city ordinance does require consent from the council to allow this to occur for the indoor range. And my suggestion that we have a two-year consent, and then after the two years, we reevaluate and make a longer consent at that time, pending there's no issues during that timeframe. I would also suggest that the consent begin after construction, and once he's ready to open up. Mike is here, if you guys do have any questions for him. He attached to this memo is the letter that he sent to us, along with some building plans.
Mike, come forward, please.
Just your name and address.
Home address, or?
Yeah. Do you have multiple?
Mike Wendell.
Yep.
My current store's at 529 Northeast Street, Carroll.
Thank you. Did you have, like, a timeframe, like, a date that you were gonna start this?
Realistically, it's probably looking towards December or January to completion.
So, Mike, to get this, the, it's from the time that is the construction of the building, Brad, or after it's constructed and he opens? The two-year starts?
The suggestion would be to start at his opening time. Instead of wasting the next six or eight months during construction time, give the consent at this time to begin on his opening day.
Okay.
Is this new building, with the new highway, or the 30 construction going on, I'm looking at this map?
Simke and Associates, they surveyed it according to the new plans for the DOT. So all those are, for when the highway's gonna be completed, those drawings that you have are in correlation to that.
Okay.
And as for the sound of gunshots at the shooting ranges that we have toured, being right outside, basically slamming a car door will be louder than what you would hear. And we're gonna take extra steps and put some insulation on the outside, 'cause it's gonna be completely encased in eight to 12 inches of concrete. So you don't have to worry about any bullets going stray, and sound is gonna be very minimal.
So on this, I'm sorry, on this drawing?
Yeah.
That's gonna be your building here?
No. That is the current brick building that is there now.
Okay, so you'll be here?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, the layout is gonna be, the floor plan is gonna be pretty similar to the one you have. The external plans are gonna be slightly different, just because of the bids that are coming in, and the snow load on some of the angles on the rough lines. The engineer said there's no way that they can withstand it.
So just for my clearness, the gray hash marks, that's the current Highway 30 curve line? Would that be correct? And then, the black solid line will be the new? I've got it here.
Oh, yeah, it's still him.
Oh. Mike, you got it?
Yeah. The solid line is, correct, the curb. And then, the setback required by the DOT from the curb is where the building will start with those hash lines. And I believe the hash lines that are in the road now that you see, I believe that is the existing curb. And then, the solid is the new curb.
Okay.
Then you're setback far enough, so you're out of there away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, this is in accordance with all DOT regulations and setbacks and everything.
And they approved your entrance in there and everything, so you're good?
Currently, my brother Matt owns land, and he is gonna talk to the DOT. I think we might have to move it maybe 10 feet.
Okay.
But he's going to, he was gonna wait to make sure I could get approval before he started doing all the paperwork.
And this is all good with zoning and everything?
Right now, we're currently working with the Board of Adjustment and zoning.
Oh, you are? I wondered about that. Okay.
So there's two actions that are currently pending. One is a special use permit that will have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consultation, and then the Board of Adjustment for approval. And there's also a variance pending before the Board of Adjustment for parking, which may or may not change. I know we've been in discussion with Mike about that.
Okay, thanks.
Do you offer classes, too?
Well, of course.
Saw a classroom in there. Good.
Nice.
Right now, we currently get about two to three customers a week asking that there's an indoor place to shoot. So the need is there. And looking at our customer base, we're drawing people from 75 miles, even Des Moines and Omaha, that come to Carroll just to go to my current location, let alone if we have indoor range and offer all the services that we plan on offering.
What's the closest range?
Dennison has one, and Boone has one.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, the, this one's gonna be, best way to say is, it's gonna be state of the art, it's all automated and everything. The closest one that would be comparable to this is McCunston Messina.
Okay.
Which is hour and a half, two hours away.
I concern your parking lot's too small.
We're, we, I've been talking with the Board of Adjustments, and we are proposing some new designs for the parking lot around the building, and on the west side, yeah, on the west side of the building, we're gonna add more parking spots.
So how would you get to that?
The current entrance, right next to the brick building.
So they're gonna have, the DOT's gonna have to give you another entrance there, then?
There's already an entrance there.
Okay. It's not showing on here.
For the old auto salvage.
Yeah. But it's not showing on this.
Yeah. That's a building that's sitting there now, right?
Yes. Yep, there's a brick building and a steel building.
Okay.
Hey, chief, with the potential of this coming in, is it something that could be beneficial to the police department?
I talked with Mike about this, and absolutely, we can use it during the winter months. We do low light to no light shooting, so we can do that at noon instead of that 10:00 PM, so we'll get lots of evidence we'll see from it.
And I've been in contact with other law enforcement agencies as well, and they're looking at the possibility. Sheriff's Department is definitely on board, as well as in talks with the mayor of Lake City, and I have a meeting with Dennison Police Chief on Thursday.
I know this is out of the scope of what we're deciding here tonight, but what about the exhaust and the?
Everything is EPA and OSHA regulated. I'm more worried about them than anything. Kerry's ventilation out of Illinois, that's all that they do is strictly gun ranges, and it has to have a 99.9% purity rate, and HEPA filters, and basically, it's turning the air over 75 cubic feet per minute, or once every 90 seconds. And those are just electric fans with a lot of special filters to filter out any and all lead particles. So that part, there's no worries.
Nothing goes out in the air into the-
No. Only thing that goes out is pure air.
They work across the street, so.
There won't be any lead clouds.
I'm just kidding about that, but I wanted to make sure that there's someone other than us watching for that.
Oh, yeah, EPA and everything. In fact, we have to have employees blood tested for lead, as well as air purity tests done. And then, we have all the OSHA and EPA, all the fun stuff we have to follow as well, and record.
Is there any other regulations that we're not gonna have to decide, that we don't even know about, that you have to deal with, or?
Everything is with the ATF, OSHA, and EPA, other than the Board of Adjustments for the special use in the variance in parking.
I can't think of any term other than giddy. Everybody I talk to who's interested in this has just been giddy, they're really excited to hear.
So are we.
What's the largest caliber you're looking at?
What's that?
What's the largest caliber you're looking at?
You name it.
15?
12 millimeter?
It will be rated up to 50 BMG.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Don't know if you'd want to shoot it in there with the pressure.
25 yard meters.
Comes with two earmuffs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, yeah. I was excited when I heard about it the first time, so.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, I'll need a-
And one suggestion, based on the comments the chief made, the final resolve clause, I would suggest that we amend that, striking at the end of the sentence granted on this date, May 14, 2018, to state something to the effect of, "That shall start upon issuance of certificate of occupancy." Certificate of occupancy, it's a known date, then, and then that would allow him two years from when he can occupy the building, versus two days, two years from today.
Won't that allow us to, for, to go through all the rezoning stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I would suggest that change the reservation.
And the two years was arrived at, how, Brad, did you find that appropriate?
It was based off suggestion after speaking with the city attorney general. Just give us a time to evaluate, make sure there's no issues, I don't project any at this point.
So does he have to come back in two years again?
Either Mike will have to come back, or I'll bring him back. Dave, we'll talk with Dave when we get to that point. But at that time, if there's no issues, my suggestion would be to give a inspiring consent.
Just go in Evergreen contract, or not inspiring?
Would you call it?
Evergreen, just renews every, just renews on its own.
Yeah, council could grant it for another two years, or perpetually.
Perpetually, okay.
Or whatever they desire at that point.
Okay.
I think perpetual is what you were after, wasn't it?
Yeah, Evergreen, just, it just renews on its own, yeah. Any other questions for Mike or Brad? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the consent to allow discharge of firearms to Wendell's Weapons LLC, with a specific purpose of an indoor firing range located at the former Carroll Auto Salvage location, 810 East Highway 30, Carroll, Iowa, with the amended clause.
That shall start upon issuance or certificate of occupancy. The two-year period.
Two-year period, okay. So moved.
Second?
There's a motion in a second? Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze, yes? Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Thanks for waiting, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your time. We'll get back on track here. The next item is the Northwest Park Pickleball Complex, 2018 Geo-Techical Exploration Services, and Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. We are currently under design with FEH for the pickleball courts, with, again, that is remodeling, reconfiguring the two Northwest tennis courts into six pickleball courts. There will not be any tennis drawing, tennis court drawings on it, and strictly pickleball courts. And our hopes is that when we get done, there'll be six of these that'll be drawn and put into place. But during the process and the design, they need soil borings done, and they, they went out and requested two quotes from us, and the lower quote was the one from CTS out of Sioux City for $1,900. Again, this will be six borings to the depth of 10 feet, and they'll give the results to FEH, and that will help them with their, finish their design on our pickleball courts.
Is this in the area around the court, or is it, you do some borings in the court itself?
In the court.
So with these borings, does that help them identify the material they need to use, or just if it's suitable?
It's suitable site. You know, we're anticipating, the other tennis courts have been there. Yeah, just to check, good soils, you know, what kind of soils and everything's there.
Is this something that's required before they do anything like this, all the time?
It helps them with their design.
Probably help with that warranty claim, too, I suppose, if anything happened.
Been down that path, haven't we?
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I need a motion to accept a proposal from CTS for professional services for the soil borings at Northwest Park, current tennis courts. So moved.
In the amount of?
Oh, right.
What was there?
$1,900.
$1,900.
So moved.
Second? There's a motion in a second? Fleischer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Baze, yes?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the Library City Hall Project Geo-Techical Exploration Services, and Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proposals were requested and received for Geo-Techical Exploration Services for the library project at this site. Three proposals were requested, and three were received. The proposal of certified testing services, CTS, satisfactorily responded to the scope of work needed within the timeframe, which was short. In order to keep the library project on schedule, the turnaround was requested by June 1st, and their fee was $1,700. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the resolution, approving a proposal of CTS for the library technical services.
These borings won't be into the building, they'll be on the outside?
They are only for the addition to the-
Okay. Any other questions for Randy? Not, I need a motion to approve the proposal of Certified Testing Services Incorporated for Geo-Techical Exploration Services for the Library City Hall Project, in the amount of $1,700. So moved. Second?
There's a motion in a second? Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Baze, yes? Dirk?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the Library City Hall Project Site Survey, and Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proposals were also requested for a site survey of this site for the library project. Three proposals were requested. One was received from Simke and Associates. They did satisfactorily respond to the proposal, with the scope necessary to continue design work on the building, and within, again, a short timeframe, June 1st, in order to keep the library design work on schedule. The Simke proposal fee was $5,750. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage of the resolution approving the proposal of Simke and Associates for the site survey for the library project.
Who asked for the request, or?
Who requested? I did.
Okay.
And this is actually all part of the budgeted expenses already, if I remember it correctly.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the resolution for the proposal of Simke and Associates for site survey for the Library City Hall Project, in the amount of $5,750. So moved. Second?
There's a motion in a second? Pat?
Yes.
Baze, yes? Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischer?
The next item is the Rolling Hills South Condominiums Engagement Agreement for Residential Urban Renewal with Allers, Aylers, and Cooney, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you, this evening is the engagement letter with Allers and Cooney to complete the TIF work with Rolling Hills South Condominiums. If you recall, we entered into an agreement with Seven-O-Six Development Corporation to provide a TIF assistance of seventy-two hu- seventy-two thousand dollars for that project in order that they could submit for a workforce tax credit through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. They have been awarded that, uh, tax credit, so the project is gonna go forward at this point. This would allow Allers to proceed with that work and actually, um, prepare that. And I would expect probably in the next thirty to sixty days, uh, the TIF, um, document itself would be presented for consideration by council. Uh, staff recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Does this have to come back to us again, or once this is done?
The agreement itself will come back.
We'll have to come back.
And there'll be a series of at least two meetings that will come back.
Come back to. Can they start doing any development at all until this is done?
Uh, they'd be doing it at their own risk until the TIF itself is in place. But yeah. Uh, the issue would become if they started development now, and then we didn't complete the TIF work. A, we didn't do it, or B, um, we didn't do it till next year. There could be value that gets added to the tax basis that would not be able to be captured through TIF. So we do wanna get this in place, um, before the end of the year, actually probably by December first, if I recall right. But that shouldn't be an issue.
Any other questions for Mike? Not, I need a motion to approve the engagement agreement with Aylers and Cooney, PC, for the Rolling Hills South Condominiums.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Bays? Yes. Flaschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the Water Transmission Main Contract for Services Received from New Minnick, Camito, New, and Bating, PC. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, contract for services was requested and received, uh, for the Water Transmission Main Project, from New Minnick, Camito, New, and Bating. Uh, they attached a copy of their contract for services. It agree, it, uh, basically includes agreement that the city will hire a new law firm, um, and will be represented by Jeff Minnick and Gina, Gina Bating, and that their charge will be two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the resolution approving contract for services with New Minnick, Camito, New, and Bating.
There was a, a memo that came out when the, something got extended to June fourth.
That was the response time.
Do the response, or will they do it?
They, they've agreed to extend the response time.
Okay.
To sometime after the date.
Okay, so then.
So, so Jeff will.
Jeff will do that then, okay.
Jeff will file the answer.
Alright, thank you.
Um, this question might be for you, Dave. I'm looking at their hourly rate, I'm not complaining about that, but it says, will bill not less than quarterly for services rendered, so we won't see a bill for three months, is that unusual?
Not really, no.
Okay.
In a, in a litigation situation like this, you know, you may have.
It seemed long to me like we could have a surprisingly high bill without me even knowing it.
Yeah.
So.
You may have a lot of work done in one quarter and very little in the next. So no, I, I don't think that's, that's unusual.
It's not unusual to do quarterly instead of a monthly type statement, okay.
I think we could surely request that they, that they bill a monthly. I don't think we're, we're stuck with their, their recommendation of quarterly. Council desires a monthly, I think it's up to.
You just keep track of it a little, you know, a little more so.
Does that concern anybody else that a long time before we'd see a bill, or?
What about you, Laura? Either way?
Yeah, either way's fine.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the contract services, uh, for the water main transmission con- uh, water transmission main for services with New Minnick, Camito, New, and Bating, PC.
There's a motion in a second. Bays?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Flaschner?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Thank you. Our final resolution is the covering the street lighting on East Ninth Street. Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, back in two thousand sixteen, when, uh, Tenth Street in the actual business park was, uh, street lighting was installed, uh, we observed that there was none placed at the intersection of Ninth Street and Tenth Street, and there was none ever existing at Ninth Street and Griffith Road. So at the time, we requested that Mid-American Energy provide us a cost to make those two installations. They have done that now, uh, for those two lights, a cost of twenty-three dollars and twelve cents per month. And I have tried to estimate the impact of that onto the budget, and, uh, there is some minor impact, of course. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage of the resolution adding those two streetlights on Ninth Street at Griffith Road and Tenth Street.
That forty-six twenty-four is an annual, or monthly? It was like two seventy-seven a year. At the time you added both of those in there. Any other questions for Randy? Not, I need a motion to approve the covering the street lighting on East Ninth Street and Griffith Road and East Tenth Street.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Pat?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Flaschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to reports next, and our first report is the Third Street HMA Resurfacing, and Randy, change order number two, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the Third Street project was, uh, tracking out, it was, uh, determined necessary to remove and replace an entrance curb to one business to help protect against stormwater overtopping the curb and damaging the property. That was done, uh, change order number two includes the cost of doing that. Actually, there was a, a line item already in the contract for removal of driveway, which was five forty-nine seventy-two. That would be included in contract cost. There was a need to create a new line item for the replacement of that drive at eight inches. There was no bid item for that, and that was one of the determining factors for bringing this forward as a change order. So that was forty-four thirty-five fifty-six for a total change order cost of forty-nine eighty-five twenty-eight. So the new contract cost for the project is seven ninety-three eight fifty-six oh one. Change order two also adds one, excuse me, one working day for, uh, performance of that work. And that, the contract, of course, is a unit price contract. So the final contract cost will not be known until the quantities are audited, final quantities. And that will be underway before very long. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the change order number two in the amount of forty-nine five twenty-eight.
How much longer do you think that one's gonna be open for, this, this?
They, actually, they have to file the seating, and they have until the thirty, thirty-first to do that.
Okay.
And then following that, we would work forward, uh, acceptance of the project, and after acceptance, everything goes to the DOT for audit before any final payment can be made.
Any questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve change order number two for the Third Street HMA Resurfacing Project in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-eight cents.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Flaschner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our second report is the West Central Iowa Rural Water Association Request to Provide Water Service Within the Two Mile Area. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a request from West Central Rural Water was received on April twenty-seventh for rural water service to be provided to the Paul Fricki property at twenty-three one oh three, one hundred eightieth Street. Uh, the option, your options are outlined by the Iowa code, and they're listed in the memorandum. The recommendation is to waive the right to provide water service, and we anticipate that rural water will provide the service.
That's quite a ways out there. I don't know if we're gonna be out there anytime soon.
It would be a ways out, yes. But within the two mile.
Yeah, it's in that two mile. Any questions for Randy? Not, I'll need a motion to waive the right to provide water service to West Central Iowa Rural Water Association for the, uh, Paul Fricki website, or Paul Fricki, Land, Ground, Township, Section Eight, twenty-three one oh three, one hundred eightieth Street.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Flaschner?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, now to our favorite one. Next item is the, on reports is discussion of fireworks and city ordinance forty-one point one-three, and Brad, please.
Thank you. I've been waiting, excited for this all night, so. Reason for this is just to get some discussion going on, the upcoming of fireworks season, I guess, if you consider now some of the state legislatures from last year. On June first through July eighth, uh, residents of the state of Iowa are allowed to explode fireworks uh, between nine AM and ten PM. The current city ordinance prohibits that act. And last year, we responded to one hundred and two calls for service prior to that time, for subjects lighting fireworks off within the city. We did not issue any citations last year, to put the stance of more education than anything. And just kinda trying to get your guys' idea of how you wanna proceed with this. I reached out to, uh, other cities within the state, and I heard back from nine of them. And four of those cities allowed the state law to have precedence last year. And, uh, those four have now switched their stance and prohibit the use of fireworks, except for on July third and on July fourth. Some of the city, or none of the cities changed from prohibiting to allowing this coming year. And one city has changed to, uh, from allowing them to prohibiting, prohibiting them, and also adding a city ordinance for disordered house, which can go back and cite the homeowner for, uh, subjects using them on their property. So, I guess at this time, the main thing is just to get some discussion from you guys, see how you wanna proceed, to continue with our current ordinance of prohibiting them, or allowing certain days for their use, or completely following the state code.
What were the cities that you had, uh, talked with?
Independence, uh, Webster City, Iowa City, they prohibited it last year, they did make some changes this year on the sales. Fort Dodge, Sioux City.
They get, there was a, you can prohibit sales?
They restricted them to, uh, industry locations only.
Oh, okay.
So no, no commercial business sales. Norwalk, which have made no changes, Boone, Waverly, and Dubuque.
We still continue to do the same thing. We have just prohibited them altogether.
Right.
No, you can't make a motion, but you can come up and speak. Announce your name.
Oh, sorry.
And your address, please.
Nadine Rayburn, Carol, Iowa. Poor white Lincoln. Um, my dog went blind because of the fireworks last year, and I had to put him down April twenty-sixth this year. Put blind one eye and the other eye, due to the fireworks at the park. And I don't appreciate fireworks. My dogs were scared to death when they were going off, running away, thought bombs were falling all over. I thought bombs were falling, they were so close to my house. I called you guys ten o'clock one night, said, what the hell's going on? You guys came and told me, well, fireworks are going on. It's like, okay, well, I do, I do protest. My one independent vote for not having fireworks in the city limits. Sold in the city limits, like they were attended last year.
Right, right. Yeah, we got, we don't prohibit, we, we prohibit them now currently, so they shouldn't have been going off. But the sales, I think we allowed them, just because the state did.
And we can't restrict sales.
So they'll still be tended, well, I don't have any dogs anymore anyway, so.
They'll be allowed to sell them at this point, and they're still prohibited in the city to explode.
Thanks, Nadine.
Brad, of the hundred and two calls, um, that you did as more of an informational thing, you said?
Correct.
What is gonna be the charge if you do to the person this year?
There's a simple ordinance citation for the use in the city.
Is there a fine?
You should fine them out.
That's a fine amount.
And what is the fine amount?
Be up to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you have to catch them letting fireworks off in order to fine them?
Makes it a lot easier to prove, yes, yeah.
So you can't take a call, show up at a house, have a variety of stuff around, and issue them fine?
Probably not, uh, just we need to have the evidence, so we can either see them or have a witness who could testify for us. It is tough, yes. And now, you can possess them, so that's, you know, like, by having possession is not evidence that you were shooting them.
So Brad, of that, up to two hundred and fifty thousand, is it, uh, the judge ever determine what that penalty would be?
Up to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Alright, two hundred and fifty, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Come forward again, Nadine, please, that's fine.
I do know how he got injured, because I saw him was doing it in that park. And it was right there in Maple Park, I know the people.
In Maple Park?
Uh-huh.
Did you make a report with?
Yes, I did.
His department, okay.
At ten o'clock that night.
Okay.
I knew their names and where they worked, but, um, I figured because the governor lifted the ban on it, that they could do that. And it's like, okay. Okay, you wanna kill, uh, dogs, you wanna kill blind people, and children too? Excuse me, I'm not for that.
Right.
Totally a protest. Thank you.
Thank you again. Go ahead.
So, Brad, did I hear you right, the trend is people who are more lenient and allowed certain days, certain times, they're becoming stricter.
They are, correct.
Because of so many complaints.
Due to the complaints, yes.
I remember someone was here when we dealt with this and talked about people with PTSD, those kinds of things. Did you have any of those types of complaints among the calls in the summer, a hundred and two?
I don't recall those were specific issues that were brought up.
Okay.
Uh, most of them were just the calls of neighbors or people not blocked, or someone shooting them off.
Knowing it was illegal, somebody was doing this. Doesn't seem that winter's a problem.
Uh, winter was much better, yes. We had one call from December tenth till January third.
So.
Maybe, there's no one else selling during that time, and the availability in the summertime, uh, we saw the tents last year, and we're gonna probably have the same amount this year.
I would tell you on the PTSD issue, um, that's probably one of the biggest comments I get, just because of my background in history. And being one that has PTSD myself, we're probably not gonna call the cops too quick. Um, it's one of those things you just deal with privately, and so I'm very sensitive to this whole topic, you know, when representing veterans and myself.
So will it be an informational call this year?
No, we can't respond to a hundred and two calls for service again, so we're gonna have to take a harder stance this year if we continue to prohibit them out.
You caught, you, you find somebody doing this red-handed, are you able to confiscate what they have? Probably.
I would think that would be evidence that we'd be able to confiscate that.
Okay. Even though they're legally allowed to keep it?
We still be able to shoot, to use that as evidence, uh, that they were shooting them, so we would confiscate them. And we have to give them back at some point, and that'll be up to the judge to determine.
If you take, uh, multiple calls, or, you know, other violations, and then this one, is this a secondary or a primary call?
This could be a primary call, we don't need anything else that would happen. Um, if we get called to a fight and they're shooting fireworks, the fireworks is probably in the front of the back room until the fight situation's figured out, but this, this can be a primary call, so it could be just this single, this is that's our call for us.
Do you go to the fight first, or do you go to the fireworks at their separate places?
Or the driver, or whoever it may be.
Right.
Okay.
That's what.
That's what you're.
That's what I was asking.
That's what I was asking.
I've got a report here from a little-known college over in eastern Iowa, the University of Iowa. I've heard of it, but their, their reports here state that basically for 10 years, there was a steady state. It was pretty even across the board on injuries. And last year, after it was legalized, it doubled. Now, that can be a little bit misleading because it doubled to 21. So, the total count is still fairly low, but they did notice a big increase, and that was after a 10-year average where everything was pretty stable. One of the things I thought was kinda interesting is that patients under the age of 18 increased by 26%. So, then injuries after legalization were more severe, with 57% of the encounters requiring surgery compared to just 20% the years prior. Some of the statistics to consider.
Your report at the under 18 is, matches our compliance checks. We didn't check tents last year in businesses, and if you did sell them, they didn't even notify anybody, so they were selling, but we came in at 16 or 15. And we'll continue that, we'll do compliance checks again to make sure they are following the requirements.
Do you have any information, Mike, on this?
Well, I think what, you know, last year, we had said we'd revisit it again, but I can't see any reason to change anything at this point. It's, they're still illegal. You know?
I did have some resistance last year for not allowing them to be fired.
Right.
I probably had more people saying, "Don't fire them," than the opposite.
I've had people both directions. Most are concerned about respect of the, of making noise after hours, into the early hours of the morning.
You know, you get, what, five, six days during the week when that's July 4th is on a night before, people gotta get to work the next day. Makes it a little tough at night.
I remember reading shortly right after last year, there's two cities, I wanna say Davenport and Sioux City, immediately changed their ruling to no fireworks for this coming year.
West Des Moines, I think. West Des Moines.
Fort Dodge is also. They all moved pretty quick.
And a lot of it was because they were shooting them off at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning.
I never had anything but complaints about having fireworks. No one advocated to me that they would like them to be legal in town. And I thought that there was a, I reviewed some of the emails I even had last year, and they were more concerned about after hours than anything.
A lot of these calls, I didn't put the time to the gun, but we were getting them at 3:00 in the morning, which would've been illegal by state law anyways, though. They're all that.
So, you didn't issue a ticket, but you would discuss it with the people that were there and urge them to stop.
And the majority was saying they didn't stop, the ordinance was in place.
Correct, but they did stop when you asked them.
We had very few repeat calls.
Yes, Nadine?
Do we really want our children and our animals to suffer from the sounds of blasting through the air, shotgun sounds?
Well, they're currently prohibited now anyway, and so they shouldn't be occurring, but we can't stop everybody doing everything all the time.
Well, you just mentioned some cities have banned it.
We have banned it, but just because they're banned doesn't mean they can't.
They are banned.
Correct, and then we currently have a ban. You're not supposed to fire them off in town.
Well, if you could buy them in town, what you could do with them, save them for Halloween?
No, we cannot buy this, by the state statute, we have to allow the sale of them, but we as a city can ban the use of them. And that's where we are currently. They're not allowed, people are not allowed to shoot them in town, but yet they occur. It's just like robbing a bank is illegal, but there's still people that do it. Okay? So, your point's well taken, and we understand it. We're just discussing it because we had stated last year that we would discuss it again one more time. And that's all we're, to see if we wanna make any changes. And I don't think there's gonna be anything gonna be changed, so.
As a resident of Carroll, Iowa and Carroll County for such a long time, I would appreciate it to be more strict than like the other cities you were saying, banning them.
We already do.
The city limits, you already do?
Yes, we, they are not allowed in town to be fired at all. They never have been.
Oh, really? When did this take effect?
It's been in effect for as long as I can remember. The ordinance to ban fireworks has been there forever.
The issue that changed is that people were allowed to buy them in town now, when they had to drive to Missouri to get them before.
Right.
But the state law says that they can do that now.
So, they think those, now, excuse me, my theory is they think now that they don't have to drive out of state to get them, they got them right here, they can just do ding bang move with them.
It's, it's bad law.
It is.
That makes it so tough.
That's the state legislature approved the sale of them. But we as a city have the right to not allow them to be fired. Now, you can go out in the county, you can step across on the county line, but you have to have permission of the owner of that property in order to be able to fire them off. If you don't, then you're in violation of law.
If you get caught, if they get caught, I mean.
Correct.
We, we have this as tight as we can right now prohibiting use. If you wish to see changes in the sale.
I already had a letter written to the governor, but I didn't get that far.
Governor, your representatives, and senator.
It's the state representatives that you'd have to speak.
And, and they know, too.
Well, I go straight to the governor, I go to the top. I wrote one other letter to the governor and I got her answer.
She can't change the law. Only person that can change the law is the legislature. The governor enforces the law.
Right.
The legislature makes the law.
Right, I understand.
And the attorneys interpret the law.
And your, your representatives and senators do know this is bad law, and they are working to make it better. Still, contact them and let them know about your dog, tell them your story. Those things are impactful.
Well, at least I don't have to go drinking over it.
Thank you again.
The only comment.
You need anything more from us than I think?
No, the only comment I would make is related to the sales, and I know that's irritating, it's a mixed message. I mean, you certainly, people can buy it, they think they can, they're legal to shoot. Now, if you recall, we did in our transient merchant code require anyone operating out of a tent to only operate for five days. We will likely have a tent that's gonna go up, and some people will think it's in Carroll, but it will be immediately right outside the city limits. And that tent will be allowed to be up during the entire sale period, 'cause the county doesn't regulate those type of sales. So, you know, we will likely face more of it simply because it's now gonna be available starting, it's June 1st, correct?
June 1st.
So, and, and there's really, from the city's perspective, there's not much we can do about it, it is what it's gonna be. But now tents that operate within the city of Carroll, if it's within a tent, they're gonna be restricted to five days. If it's in a permanent building, they'll be able to go the entire period starting June 1st. But there's few, if any, last year we only had one that operated within a building itself. And I think that for the city of Carroll made a big difference on the use, 'cause it really limited it down to when the tents operate.
Last year didn't we mandate some type of notification that they had to provide customers what, whether it's a sign up front, or a handbill, or something like that?
I think we talked about it, but I don't believe our ordinance requires anything like that.
Is it something we have the ability to do?
The state fire marshal issues the licenses, and I would think that's where that directive would come from, the state fire marshal and the...
What I'm thinking is some type of notification to a, somebody that's purchasing stuff, whether it's signage that, you know, you still can't fire these in town, or whatever. Is there something we can do to have that vendor have something posted to that effect?
I think we could provide some information to them, although I would think that would be a voluntary action then on their part. I don't think we have any authority to say, "Hey, you have to post this sign or give this to every customer coming in."
Can we make an ordinance to that effect?
Good.
I guess on that same spirit, what can we do to help better educate the people of Carroll, given the dichotomy of this with the state and our local laws? So, I understand, yeah, you can buy them, no, you can't shoot them off. What can we do, ladies?
Right there, who's gonna fix that?
You can talk about it tomorrow.
I do think, though, we need to let the public know that this year, we're going to enforce it. Where last year was just...
That may deter.
Right.
It'll get down to 80.
And we need to, we probably, we need to make sure that we do educate the people that this year will be enforced.
You should write the bill to, I believe, the first, the June bill, that, right there.
I think that's a good idea.
Feel free to misquote me, too, $250,000. Maybe that's...
Help with our projects. Do we have any idea how many tents might be coming to town, or when will we know that information? Do you know?
I, I don't know, how many calls have you received so far?
I think we've had two requests for permits, for solicitor permits, not have been returned to us yet. There have been zero inquiries on permit structures, though.
So, that's less than last year?
Those, they'll be coming soon. Last year, all the sales took place up till the 4th, so June 30th to July 4th, or the 29th to 30th, I don't remember exactly which days, but that's when the majority of the sales took place. So, we'll, we'll start seeing them probably mid-June.
If I recall right, I think we had four locations in town for tents and one permanent, if that's not right?
Last year?
Yeah.
That sounds pretty close.
So, I would imagine...
But what, what's their limit on, if they apply, how long does it take for you to review this and...
It says up to 10 business.
Six weeks?
Up to 10 business days on our permit for turnaround.
10 days?
It says up to 10 business days.
And you probably aren't taking it long.
Which, yeah, it takes that, no, not 10 days.
Right, right.
But if I get by a bar with them, then I guess it takes quite a bit longer.
Okay. So, they, if, if they're doing this right, they should be coming soon?
Soon, I would hope.
Their existing businesses in town, like Vongars, Walmart, except for some, they, they need to go through the permit process as well, don't they?
They just have to go through the state fire marshal's office for sales, so they don't, there's no requirements through the police department for any permitting.
That's 'cause they're permanent.
Permit structure.
They have different.
Last year, Walgreens, Vongars, I believe Walmart may have had some sales. I would guess they all will again this year.
So, we had 102 calls last year. Do you know how many we had the year before, Brad, before that had changed?
I don't have that number. Much less than 50, probably closer to 25.
Wasn't there as many as, yeah, okay.
The availability just wasn't there.
Okay.
Excuse me, Eric?
Oh, yes, sir.
Did you mention, could we amend this ordinance to have the vendors give a statement or something, I don't know, post something? I think that would be a good idea. It would hold them responsible, yeah. I mean, could it be a part of the, I, I don't have this ordinance in front of me, but I thought your idea was good, and that we are taking this seriously, I think, you know, and it may be put on there now that the law's been in effect for a year. This will be enforced, this will be taken seriously.
It puts some of the...
Because it is a health hazard, yeah.
It puts some of the responsibility on the vendor who's making, you know, who's selling them.
Right. If we're gonna allow them in our city limits, we can have expectations of them.
That they post and say these are not...
I thought that was a good idea.
And that's why I asked if that works.
I'll work with Dave on getting something created and bring it back.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Bring it back, okay.
We might be working on a, on a tight timeline here right now this year.
Sure.
As far as passing an ordinance to, to be effective immediately here.
Well, we'd have to read them and...
Right, right. So, it, it may have to be a voluntary program again this year.
This year, but, but I think it's worth pursuing when it works.
Be real curious, seeing the number of calls, if it changes if we're enforcing it than what we did last year. That'd be a good frame for next year.
Like I said, we've got a special meeting next week, and if I recall right, last year we had a special meeting over the fireworks as a whole anyway, because time of the ruling compared to our decisions and stuff, so if there's something we could add in next week and have something done that's doable.
We have the first reading, you think?
Three readings.
Yeah. I mean, it's serious.
It is.
May I speak?
Yes.
I know you're talking about ordinances and stuff like that about the vendors, and you're, I don't know, in my opinion, they ought to be a certain age to buy those, and they ought not let two, two-year-olds and three-year-olds fire them off like they did last year.
They have that already. That's already in the state law.
Mm-hmm. Well, didn't, didn't work very good where I live.
Again...
And a lot of other places, 102 calls, there's probably more people that didn't complain about it, 'cause they maybe are, like you said, PTSD, those people might have hard of hearing and what have you, and you don't know.
Correct.
They already have damage from wars.
Correct.
I think the police did everything they could to enforce state law as well as our ordinance. I mean, they take it very seriously, and we appreciate, as Clay said, you're telling us what happened, but the fact that they, you know, responded to 102 calls shows that they are working hard at this.
I could get a petition of pets, 'cause I know a lot of people that have pets that would definitely say ban it.
Yeah, they're already banned, again. We just cannot ban the sale. That's the thing we cannot do. That's the state legislature.
I changed, changed that way, wasn't I?
Do you need a motion for anything to that effect?
I think we have enough correction.
Any more statements about fireworks? If not, we will move on to our last report, this discussion on the draft city council rules of procedure. And Mike, please.
And I know the entire audience has been waiting for this riveting discussion. Included in the council packet was the draft procedures, or city council rules of procedures. This was really based on the meeting we had with Jeff Shot back on April 9th. Since then, staff, including Laura, Dave, and myself, have worked reviewing the procedures that Jeff had developed with the council, and we have them, we believe, in a final draft format. I just have it really tonight for an informational discussion. If there's anything that council would like changed or edited, you know, you can let me know now, or you can get us final comments. And then I plan to bring this back at the next regular meeting on May 29th for possible action. I'm not gonna go through them in detail, because we've done that once already, so really I'll take any questions or comments that anyone has on them at this time. So, thank you.
Just one thing, the whole thing looked consistent with what we discussed, and I don't know, maybe it's just worded, it means the same, it's just worded a little differently. On the closing debate call for vote, in the draft with Jeff Shot in April, it, it mentions presiding officer's right to close debate unless two-thirds of those present vote to continue discussion. And then the wording is, has changed from the two-thirds to unless the majority of the council vote to continue the discussion. It's just, you've moved from two-thirds to using a majority.
Majority, that's true.
But, but with six, that is a majority, but there may not be six people here. So, is that why you moved to majority versus two-thirds?
I don't recall, I think that comment came from...
I'm good with, I'm good with that, I'm just wondering.
I think we had that discussion off the staff.
It should be majority, right?
And, and our thought process was exactly that.
Right.
For, for six members, it, two-thirds is four votes.
Yeah, right.
Unless we change...
Close the closing debate call to vote, Carolyn?
Correct.[1692.91]
I got three-quarters online.
We need to change it to one.
You have two-thirds. I have two-thirds and I have Jeff Shot.
Four, we go back to two-thirds again. If you have five, four.
We're talking about here.
You need three out of four.
That's three-fourths.
So what's this?
So it's just a majority.
Majority.
If, if it's not.
You can simply go back to four votes if you wanted to handle it that way. Three-fourths, you got to have, to do three-fourths, we got to have five-sixths to beat it. Get a five, yeah.
So if we end up, you know, having eight people on the council, you know, or some night when you only have four, you still got a quorum. You're still going to need a majority, which is going to be three.
I think that's.
Which is three-fourths more than two-thirds, so.
The three-fourths comes, so the majority comes into effect when the mayor calls, basically is moving to a vote. If, if the council as a whole says we want to move to a vote and there's dissension in that, then it takes three-fourths to, for the council, for a member of the council to call a question and to force the closure of it. And it really is to make sure you're not stymying the minority in a discussion.
Well, it takes a majority to continue the discussion. Is what it is, right?
Correct. But there's two different things happening in that paragraph. I think Laverne was asking about the.
Yeah, but in the draft, you originally had two-thirds with Jeff Shot, now it's three-fourths.
Again, it was, do you want the minority to be shut out of the debate?
So be shut out with two-thirds or three-fourths in the poll?
Yeah, yeah. I personally, I don't care, whatever you decide.
Two-thirds, three-fourths is still going to be a majority.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd have to think about that one. Because I'm trying, you know, you got to think of the very, what if, what if there's eight council people? So you still, then you're, then you're.
You got the same thing, you got the same thing a few pages down or a little bit. Special motions, it's same three-fourths there also. Waiver, abort, and threes.
So three-fourths.
Three-fourths go five in attendance.
You'd have to have five.
Five-sixths, to beat us. Yeah, to be right. It's quite a bit more than a majority.
Yes.
Is that what you want? That much more than a majority?
Well, it's what you want.
It depends on how, how high the threshold you want implementing these two steps.
Yes.
And again, these are rules to run the meeting. And, you know, if you're doing it and there's issues down the road, we got to change them.
Yes.
And amend the rule.
Who's going to memorize these?
I know. I've seen your dream for this and going.
The parliamentarian has to have my hand.
Yeah.
Can we start things like July 1st of 2019 so I can get these things?
Yeah. The city manager decides if the rules have been broken, so.
There was a lot in there to keep track of, but.
City attorney.
I just had one question.
No, it says city manager at the end.
Only if the city attorney's not there.
If it's not there, oh, good, okay.
Shall we consider final authority questions regarding?
I was going to say.
I just have one question. Not that I'm looking to change it necessarily, but under the public hearings, second paragraph, after all citizen input has been received, if we have a room full of people, is that what you want to do? Do you want to leave it after all citizen input? Do you want to change that somewhat? Just throwing it out there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but I think with, if it's a technical public hearing, I think you're required to accept all public input. I don't think you can limit that under statute.
Okay. Because I know at one other point we had, we had addressed, you know, if everybody's in favor, speak to that note. Always speak if you have something different to say of it. I wasn't sure with the public hearing, so, okay. That would clarify that.
I think anybody that wants to speak at a public hearing should be entitled to do so, but keeping it like we did for five minutes, that's plenty.
Just a minor thing on the first page of this, under special meetings, you changed from if a citizen requests a special meeting, you changed it to if a non-elected official. I know it's usually an elected official that would initiate this, but citizen, non-elected official. I don't know, I kind of thought citizen was a good way to phrase it.
I think we changed it because council members are citizens. So we wanted to differentiate it between a council member who's a citizen and a non-council member who's also a citizen.
I guess I just figured.
So you as the city manager of your request of special meeting, you're paying for it?
There's actually an exception to that.
Well, we're going to request it as an elected official, you know, unless we're not an elected official.
And, you know, maybe a, maybe a, well, and the other thing is, I think we were going at is if you had someone out of town who's not a citizen making the request. So it may not always be a Carroll resident making the request.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I see where you're going.
So you have a developer, for example, needs to meet a time for it.
Okay, sounds good.
And we've got another two weeks to review these again if there's questions that come up.
And even at that, if, if, there's no hurry, there's no urgency in this.
My mayor pro temp should have it memorized.
Yeah.
Part of their job.
Who says I don't?
We're going to find out.
Yeah, we'll have a test. I can read.
Any other questions or comments with regards to the rules of procedures? If not, I trust everyone's read the committee reports. I have no comments this evening. Any comments from any of the council? Any comments from the city manager? Finally, I will need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Cap?
Yes.
Daisy, yes. Flusher?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.